Buenas en Hafa Day. This public hearing is called to order. The time is now 2:05 PM, Thursday, October 30th, 2025. In compliance with the open government law, notices today's hearing were noticed on KOAM and provided via email to senators, stakeholders in the local media, and posted on the Governor Guam Public Notices website on Thursday, October 23rd for the five-day notice and Tuesday, October 28th for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements. I would like to acknowledge my colleague who has joined me here today, Senator Shelley Calvo.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive testimony on Resolution 83-38 sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez, Vice Speaker V. Anthony Ada, Senators Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Theresa M. Turlohi, Telo T. Tai Te Gui, Speaker Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Shelley V. Calvo. Relative to the United Nations Declaration of 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives and recognizing its importance in achieving sustainable development goals and revitalizing economic and social development for Guam and the Oceanic region. The rules of conduct today's hearing are as follows. The order of those wishing to testify will begin with the government agencies, followed by those confirmed in advance, and then by the sign-in sheet. I ask that all written testimonies be submitted in advance to my staff to facilitate copying and dissemination to all those that are present here today. When you are called to testify, please ensure the microphone is on and restate your name and organization if applicable for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given an opportunity at the end of the panel to ask questions. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Now to begin our agenda. On Resolution 83-38 LS, relative to the United Nations Declaration of 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives and recognizing its importance in achieving sustainable development goals and revitalizing economic, social development for Guam and the Oceanic region. For brief introduction, Resolution 83-38, recognizing the UN Declaration of 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives, underscores the powerful role that cooperatives play in advancing sustainable development goals from eradicating poverty and hunger to promoting renewable energy, supporting stable and dignified work, preserving biodiversity, and building economic resiliency. It also highlights the unique strengths of cooperatives, including democratic ownership, community-rooted economic activity, and equitable sharing of profits as vital mechanisms for local resilience, especially in underserved communities. The enactment of Public Law 37-147, which established the Limited Cooperative Association Act in Guam's laws on December 28th, 2024, provides an accessible framework for those wishing to establish limited cooperative associations in Guam. The Limited Cooperative Association law specifies essential aspects of governance of an LCA from its creation and amendment of its articles of incorporation, bylaws, filing, naming, registering, access to information by its members, reporting, public notices of annual and special meetings, membership, members' interests, transferability of interests, allocation of profits and losses, directors and officers, quorum, dissolution, mergers and disassociation if applicable. This model allows for a membership by patrons and investors who can provide needed funding, but also ensures the control of patron members in their role as individual members and through the Board of Directors of the cooperative. Since the enactment of Public Law 37-147, Resolution 83-38 seeks a coordinated government-wide approach for its implementation through cooperative development that includes cooperative business education and training programs in the workforce development initiatives, launching an education and outreach campaign through the University of Guam and the Guam Economic Development Authority in partnership with cooperative experts, and implementation of Public Law 37-147 that includes updating forms and staff training within the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Additionally, Resolution 83-38 promotes regional solidarity by calling for creation of cooperative working groups in the Sina Mai, FSM, and Palau to help introduce and advance similar legislation in the respective governments. It builds on years of advocacy and development work by local cooperative leaders and reflects a growing movement across the Pacific to use cooperatives as a pathway to shared prosperity, environmental stewardship, and democratic governance. I would like to thank my cosponsors, Vice Speaker V. Anthony Ada, Senators Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Theresa M. Turlohi, Telo T. Tai Te Gui, Speaker Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Shelley V. Calvo, for their support and recognition of the importance of developing cooperatives on Guam and building a resilient community through economic development that incorporates social, environmental, and democratic ideals. So at this time, I would like to invite members of the public to provide testimony in regards to Resolution 83-38. And so I'd like to recognize Jordan Panwello from the Micronesian Climate Change.
Buenos en Hafa Day. Casaderia Mayenco, Hafa Day Senators. Thank you for the chance for me to speak today. My name is Jordan Panwello from Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. I'm here today because I believe in the power of people coming together. I believe in us building and sharing ways to solve problems as a community, and that's what this resolution aims to recognize. This year, the United Nations declared 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives with the theme "Cooperatives Build a Better World." That message isn't just for other countries, it's for us too, right here on Guahan. It reminds us that cooperatives are more than just a business model. They're a way for people to own and manage something, businesses, together, and to make sure the benefits stay in our communities. The UN has also connected this global effort to the Sustainable Development Goals, the movement to end poverty, protect our planet, and ensure no one is left behind. Cooperatives make sure those goals are real. They create good jobs, support local food systems, and they make housing more affordable and build true community resilience. Here on Guahan, we've already taken a big step with the Guam Uniform Limited Cooperative Association Act, giving people the legal foundation to start co-ops in different business sectors. But what we also need is awareness and recognition, and passing this resolution would help spark a wider conversation, recognizing people, schools, and organizations across the island to learn what cooperatives are and what they can help and how they can help us strengthen our local economy and community well-being. Passing this resolution would show that Guahan values equity and community, not just as words, but as action. It's about lifting up the people who are already working together to make life better for all of us and inspiring more of us to do the same. So I'm asking this body, please pass this resolution. Let's honor the spirit of Anafa Malik, of taking care of one another, and show the world that Guahan believes in building a better, more sustainable future together. Kalangan lap and sitsuutsu masi.
Sitsuutsu masi, Jordan, for that testimony and many months of working through this legislation. Yeah. I'd like to recognize Michelle Crisostomo for her testimony.
Good afternoon, honorable senators. My name is Michelle Crisostomo. I serve as President of Guahan Sustainable Culture, as well as a commercial farmer here on Guam, and here today to offer my strong support for Resolution 83-38, which recognizes 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives and calls for concrete actions to develop Guam's cooperative sector. The law exists, and now we need implementation. Public Law 37-147 established the legal framework for cooperatives on Guam, but a law is meaningless if people don't know it exists, don't understand how to use it, and don't have the support to make it work. So this resolution calls for three essential actions: education and training programs in workforce development, outreach campaigns through UOG and GITA with cooperative experts, and then DRT implementation support. And as a farmer and an advocate for our local farmers, cooperatives are a proven and trusted model for farmers. It's not an experiment. Two million farmers are members of more than 2,100 cooperatives in the United States. These cooperatives are generating nearly $188 billion in agriculture revenues annually, and the fact that two million US farmers have chosen cooperatives demonstrates a deep trust in this model. And there are many examples of how governments in different countries and states have supported cooperatives to make that successful. Working in Guam's agricultural community, I see the challenges daily. Our imports of 90% of our food. We work with many small-scale farmers and ranchers. The large buyers, like hotels, restaurants, even government institutions, find it difficult to coordinate with 10 different small-scale farmers who are selling small amounts of hot peppers or cucumbers. They instead would prefer to call one import distributor to work with them, and that leaves our farmers shut out, not because their product isn't good or that they can't compete on price, but because they can't offer the volume and consistency of a consolidated supplier. So cooperatives could solve this by letting farmers aggregate their production and negotiate as one entity, but the farmers need training on how to form and operate cooperatives. There's many farmers that lack access to land, infrastructure, and equipment, but through cooperatives, they can share resources and achieve economies of scale, but they need the education on how cooperative ownership works. There's a lot of federal funding available. USDA offers a lot of grants, including a value-added producer grant, rural business cooperative program grant, and a lot of grants for food system funding, but farmers have difficulty accessing these programs, knowing that they exist, or even understanding how to structure a cooperative to be eligible for some of these programs. They need the technical assistance to complete applications. And so the education and outreach this resolution calls for is what connects Guam's farmers to resources that are already available to us as a US territory. And right now, it's really important that Department of Revenue and Tax has the forms to file a cooperative and that the staff are trained on how to process applications, which I did here. There was some recent movement and success in that area, so yeah, just without this basic administrative infrastructure, the law is unusable. So Public Law 37-147 gave us the tool, and Resolution 83-38 gives us the implementation plan. And without education, outreach, and administrative support, it would be very difficult for cooperatives to succeed. With these actions, we can help our community, our workers, and our farmers have better opportunities, improve their lives, and especially for our farmers, it would help them compete against imports, access federal funding, and help build our food security. So I urge the legislature to adopt Resolution 83-38. Sitsuutsu masi. Thank you.
Sitsuutsu masi, Michelle, for your great testimony. So next, I would like to acknowledge Tewid Merazbang and Sitsuutsu masi for being here and being through the whole process. So you have the floor.
Hafa Day and Ali, Senator Perez and Senator Calvo, thank you so much for cosponsoring this resolution. My name is Tewid Merazbang, CEO and co-founder of Pacific Nesian Equities. We foster and increase equitable and sustainable business models throughout Guam and Oceania. I strongly support this cooperative resolution. This year is identified and designated by the UN as the International Year of the Cooperatives. The last time it was designated as the International Year of the Cooperative was, I think, 10 or 11 years ago, so it's been some time. And so there is a strong need for looking at how we do business and how we bring equitable and sustainable business models into our community so that we can make our communities more stronger and more resilient. In fact, the theme for this cooperative international year is "Cooperatives Build a Better World." And in fact, cooperatives really do build a better world, as clearly shown by the resolution and how they closely align with 17 Sustainable Development Goals. They focus on reducing poverty, good health and well-being, affordable and clean energy, climate action, sustainable cities and communities, and responsible consumption and production. These are the sort of things that we want in our communities. Things that bring a large reduction in poverty, support good health and well-being, climate action. I do want to highlight some of the positive traits about cooperatives. Cooperatives have high job retention rates, they reduce reuse recycle, they have 80% to 90% success rate over the course of five years compared to traditional business models. They pay their fair share of taxes, they fare better through crisis, and they also build wealth for their employees through internal capital accounts, and then they also fare better through crisis compared to other traditional business models. When businesses are owned by the employees, are owned by the community, they're going to have a vested interest in saying, how do we make the decisions collectively that ensures the success of our business? When it comes to reduced reuse recycle, how do we ensure that we operate the business in a way that generates waste, generates less waste into our communities? In Guam, the landfill is a very high topic, it's always on the news. If we want to reduce the amount of things that are going into our landfill, we want the type of business models that are owned by community, that are conscientious about what kind of waste goes into our landfill. So if we want to reduce the amount of waste that's going into our landfill, these are the type of business models we want in our community, and thus protects our rivers and it protects our oceans, protects our marine livestock. We know as oceanian people that if we destroy our rivers, we destroy our oceans, and if we destroy our oceans, we destroy our marine livestock. And so that's why it's even more imperative that we look closely at the type of business models that we have operating in our communities. If we want safer, it goes back to good health and well-being, as one of the 17 Sustainable Development Goals. If we want to ensure good health and well-being for our communities, cooperatives show, in many studies, that they are going to reduce reuse recycle. And so, for example, if you look at Kmart, does Kmart care about the kind of waste that is generated into our communities? Probably not, because if you go into the Kmart and you see those shelves, they're stacked up high to the ceilings. That's because people don't have democratic say in how that business is operated, so there's a large amount of waste that can be generated in Kmart, you couldn't care less. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but their actions definitely do not show it. I do want to share a quick story, not share a story, but I want to share a quick explanation on coral reef resiliency. I do want to share this because this, I feel, is very important in sharing, because we care so much about our coral reef and we take so much action in protecting our coral reef. And so resilient coral reefs are those that have a high ability to withstand disturbances like storms and warming waters, and then recover afterward. This resilience comes from a combination of factors, including high biodiversity, healthy local conditions free of human stressors, and the presence of heat-tolerant coral species. Strategies to enhance reef resilience involve reducing local threats and actively protecting and restoring resilient coral populations, sometimes by selective breeding or planting to serve as nurseries for repopulating damaged reefs. And one of the things that I'm going to read here says, "How can we help coral reefs become resilient?" It goes to talking about reduce human stressors, as well as allowing those heat-tolerant coral species to thrive. And so that's exactly what we want to do here. We know that coral reef resiliency involves protecting those heat-tolerant types of coral species. And so if we want our local economy and our communities to thrive and become resilient and stronger, what kind of business models do we want to have proliferating in our economy? We want the type of business models that have a high job retention rate, 80 to 90% success rate, they reduce reuse recycle, pay their fair share of taxes, and fare better through crisis while building capital for their employees. If we want a resilient and stronger economy, these are the types of business models we want. And so scientists look at coral reef resiliency, and they focus on building those sort of factors in coral reefs that are tolerant for high heat temperatures to thrive. And so that is what we want to do in the economy, in our communities. We want to ensure that these sort of business models that are equitable, sustainable, thrive in our economies, and when that happens, our communities become resilient and stronger. And these are not things that I just made up, these are studies from the US Department of Agriculture, Economic Policy Institute, US Federation of Worker Cooperative Project Equity. These are based on studies in universities, University out of Wisconsin, and British Columbia University is focused on cooperatives. So I am thankful that this resolution is introduced, and I urge the passing of this Resolution 83-38. But with that, I do want to end in calling out that we need cooperative development centers. And the way to ensure that these business models thrive is that we have cooperative development centers. Just as there are small business development centers that support small businesses, we want cooperative development centers to thrive and support these sort of infrastructure. We want a cooperative vision, just like in states in California, Washington, and Colorado, they've helped expedite this process of building resilient and stronger communities by opening up cooperative divisions under their economic division. So I hope that we can find a way in opening a cooperative vision within GITA, as GITA's Economic Development Agency. I also, I mean, it's not very hard to do, you have two to three employees that are cooperative coordinators, having tax incentives for businesses that are ready to sell to their employees or landlords that are prepared, that are ready to sell, and having tax incentives for landlords and business owners that sell to their employees and to their tenants. This is a fast way in expediting the process of building our communities to become more resilient and stronger at the state level. We also urge that the School of Business at UOG look into creating curriculums in developing educational programs for cooperatives. Like my friend here, Michelle Crisostomo, has said, "The law is wonderful and great, but if there's no mechanisms in place and infrastructure to help the cooperative infrastructure develop and thrive, it's going to be very, very difficult to get to a stronger and resilient community faster." The UOG CIS programs, Center of Island Sustainability Programs, I urge that there's more programs and support that is included to talk about cooperatives, as clearly shown that cooperatives closely aligned with the 17 Sustainable Development Goals. So we're in a time where now is even more important to have these sort of business models in our community. And so I thank you for this resolution, I thank you for your time, and I strongly urge the passing of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Sitsuutsu masi, Tewid, and for those suggestions, I'll comment later, just to allow for more testimony. So Moneka De Oro from Micronesia Climate Change Alliance, you're recognized.
Hafa Day, and good afternoon, Tiro, to our distinguished senators, Senator Perez and Senator Calvo. Guajusi Moniaka De Oro, I'm the Co-Executive Director of Micronesia Climate Change Alliance, and at MCCA, we hope to be solutions-oriented. So as much as we know all the problems and challenges that face our island, we don't want to sit back and complain, we want to champion solutions. And cooperatives are a great solution to environmental issues, as many of my colleagues spoke to, and as well as making, distributing wealth more equitably across our island and bringing our people, uplifting our people out of poverty. We're in a time where rent for a one-bedroom apartment is well over $1,000, and we're in a precarious time where SNAP is, we don't know if we're going to have SNAP after next month. And so so many of our community rely on public assistance, and as public assistance is being attacked at the national level, we really need to be finding ways in which our community can be self-reliant, and our community can live that spirit of Anafa Malik and help one another out without being a burden to our community. And so I'm here today to speak in strong support of Legislative Resolution 83-38 for cooperatives here on our island of Guahan. Last month, at the beginning of September, I was blessed with the opportunity to visit the country of Sri Lanka for a Global Food Sovereignty Forum. This was a powerful forum that was actually hosted at one of Sri Lanka's nine national institutes for cooperative development. They have nine different campuses across the country. I believe that by examining the successful model of cooperative development in Sri Lanka, we can gain a valuable insight and inspiration for fostering that thriving cooperative sector here on our island. This is especially important in highlighting the need for resourcing a cooperative task force to drive the implementation of co-ops locally, as both Michelle and Tewid really shared. So Sri Lanka, for those of you who don't know, is a developing island nation off the coast of India, it has more than 23 million people, and it's been struggling economically, especially due to the high rates of interest that it gets from loans from global entities like the International Monetary Fund or the IMF. That sort of constriction of global forces on their economic system resulted in a civil war that lasted from 1983 to 2009. Formal institutions were weak during that time, but cooperatives emerged as a crucial mechanism for people to return and rebuild their livelihoods. It was a stable economy because it was a local economy. It was a stable economy because it was local, it was a local economy. This was especially true for the northern provinces where a lot of violence was, was very present. Producer cooperatives linked to sectors like fisheries, farming, livestock, and women entrepreneurship were instrumental in returning to a sense of normalcy after all that, after years of social tension. Social capital, including neighborhood ties and shared experiences, were vital in re-establishing cooperatives that may have lost and then creating self-help groups for sustainable incomes, especially after times of disaster and social unrest. These co-op structures help marginalized groups such as war widows, ex-combatants, for them to access resources, rebuild their lives, and imagine a new future. So Sri Lanka, and so much has happened since then. The National Institute for Cooperative Development was founded in two thousand and one and it serves as an excellent case study for Guam and across the world for the potential of a well-resourced and impactful cooperative ecosystem support. The NICD's core objective is to enhance the skills and knowledge of individuals within the cooperative sector, thereby boosting efficiency and productivity. Their key successes and functions highlight a comprehensive approach to cooperative growth. At the NICD, they offer training and education with a wide array of programs, diplomas, certificate courses, workshops, management development initiatives, ensuring the continuous learning and professional growth for all cooperative members across the country. It gives skilled, opportunities for skill development. They actively foster creative entrepreneurship, democratic awareness among members, and aligning vocational training with both local and international standards. It also becomes a place for research and data. The institute conducts vital research on cooperative development, meticulously documents success stories, and serves as a central resource for collecting and disseminating crucial data and reports. It promotes excellence through consultancies, business clinics, struggling cooperative organizations. The NICD encourages the establishment of exemplary cooperative enterprises at the village level. And it also fosters international collaboration. They successfully have built networks with cooperative organizations globally, promoting policy-friendly practices and expanding opportunities for its members to travel and teach and learn across the world. Actually, when I was in Sri Lanka, I was texting Tewid about my time there and he was like, "Wow, there's a conference for cooperatives next week." And he was hoping that he would be able to attend it. So Sri Lanka is definitely becoming a world leader in both agroforestry and food sustainability sovereignty projects and in cooperatives. So those lessons that I learned, I thought that there could be a lot that can go into the Cooperative Task Force for Guam, which is something this resolution calls for pretty strongly and something that there's a great need for and something that I hope this legislature can resource, both with infrastructure and with funding. So the Task Force for Guam can act as a crucial coordinator between the government, entities, and cooperative organizations. It could actively propagate cooperative business models. It could help with existing cooperatives to maintain good governance, adherence to business regulations, and strengthen cooperative practices. The Task Force could also help guide cooperatives in adherence to policies and help coordinate between various institutes and external parties involved in cooperative services. It also can assist in the government launching further development projects for cooperatives. And like our colleague said, there is a lot of funding both at the national level and the international level to help start these kinds of programs up. The cooperative policies upheld in Sri Lanka are founded on universal principles that we can readily embrace and also resonate within our cultures here in Guam. There's a lot of volunteer and Oprah membership. It's very inclusive. It's governed by democratic principles and all the members are the ones who make decisions. So it won't lead to what I was just reading in the news today that big, huge businesses like Walmart and Amazon, which have tens of thousands of employees and have so much wealth, all the wealth goes to the top. Even though those, those companies are really huge, more than sixty percent of the employees at Walmart are on public assistance. And more than fifty percent of the employees at Amazon, which its owner is one of the richest people in the world, are also on public assistance. So cooperatives, because they're democratic, won't allow that to happen. It really spreads the wealth across pretty equitably and not have someone at the top who's pretty much reaping the benefit of everyone else's labor. And because cooperatives are run communally, social concerns can be met. And there's more care in the process of coming together to, to build profits together. There's also more independence and freedom, education, training, and information that's shared amongst its members. And there's just this sort of alignment around support, membership responsibility, self-responsibility, genuineness, harmony, justice, equality, and just responsibility to, to others. The biggest thing that I took away during my time in Sri Lanka was how inspired I was by the woman-led cooperatives. There was one woman-led cooperative that empowered mothers and women on the tea estates. Sri Lanka exports almost, I think like more than half of the world's tea. And so most of the tea runs through women cooperatives. And they also take that tea, the leftover tea, to use them as natural dyes for furthering the, the circular economy and creating more eco-friendly products. There was one handloom cooperative that I got to see that was started in nineteen seventy-one. And this was another woman-led cooperative in a really rural area, era, area of the country. And they preserve and create more traditional heirlooms. And so thinking about all the different artisans and the crafters here on Guam and how wonderful cooperatives could be for our, our cultural workers would be really nice to see. And then these examples from Sri Lanka demonstrate that with strategy, strategic support, education, and adherence to core cooperative principles, cooperatives can be a powerful engine for economic development, social empowerment, and community resilience. By passing this cooperative resolution, Guam can signal its commitment to fostering a similar environment of growth and opportunity for our people. Let us learn from Sri Lanka's success and pave the way for a vibrant cooperative future here on Guam and in the rest of the Pacific. This is Masih.
This is Masih Moneka for your testimony and sharing your insights regarding Sri Lanka cooperatives. So now I'd like to recognize Victoria Manley for her testimony.
Perfect, okay. Hafadeh, thank you for allowing us the space to give our testimony and to showcase how important we believe the cooperative infrastructure is for the kind of future we would like to see as individuals, community members, and different social entrepreneurs and organizations here. So thank you, senators, for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to support the cooperative infrastructure on Guam. I am in support of resolution eighty-three dash thirty-eight. I want to go over three main points. My personal story in the customer service industry and how a cooperative infrastructure can give way to a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive future. How the cooperative infrastructure can help us reach the goals of the United Nations Sustainable Development before 2030, which is our target year. And how we can utilize and appreciate government and organizational support as well as attracting investors globally. In line with my personal story, I've worked at two companies that are aligned with recreation and customer service. Both companies have the goal to provide service, experience, and products that are of a high quality and generate revenue. However, my personal experience has showcased that internal structure of how a business is run as well as who makes the decisions are key factors for employee retention, satisfaction, and sustainability for all stakeholders involved. I've worked at a company for three years and I can say the decision-making process for procedures that directly affect me and other entry-level employees causes much internal conflict. Concerns always went to deaf ears despite this company having human resource representatives and they modeled the hierarchical structure and this created mistrust between leadership and employees. Essentially, the old model form that showcases from the top down is outdated and the general educated population crave more equity, inclusion, diversity, and a sustainable framework that is essentially the cooperative infrastructure we're all here to support today. When I think of a cooperative, I didn't understand what that meant until supporting Pacific Nesian Equities here and other community members for economic democracy. I see it parallel as learning a new word in a different language, a language that has concepts not found in the English dictionary. I previously had no idea what I was experiencing in a different company. This company is the Guam Climbing Gym and the Guam Badminton Sports Complex. They are part owners, there are four different owners, and they are operated and owned by the owners and they are also the employees. They were the primary model in understanding how economic democracy worked. This company and the owners played a huge aid in my understanding. The owners, the community members, everyone created decisions democratically. They created the process for how labor and resources were equally distributed and they had a greater quality for their stakeholders. These owners created workplaces that is essentially a cooperative without the helpful procedures and infrastructure on a legislative level. They practiced democracy. They were resilient in their business and their employee morale during Typhoon Marwar and other hardships that they've endured. And not all decision-making is burdened by one individual, but as a collective. Their angel investors throughout the community were able to have benefits by the discretion of the owners and what they agreed was fair. My primary ask for my testimony is to help provide support and resources for the cooperative movement on Guam and in the region, to help highlight the year 2025 by the United Nations, the year of the cooperatives, and to help us reach our target goals that were established by them. And personally, the cooperative movement is a demand I have seen in everyday employees. Just like a world in another language, we don't have the concepts readily available yet for the general public. Just like the parallels of a new word in another language, we are ready for concepts that can create an equitable, just, and inclusive, and sustainable world. That is the end of my testimony. Thank you very much for your time.
This is Masih Victoria for your presence and your testimony today. So now recognize Maria Hernandez from MCCA for her testimony.
Hafadeh, honorable senators, this is Masih to everybody here today testifying in support of resolution eighty-three dash thirty-eight. Inon Husi Maria Hernandez, I'm the owner and maker behind Lonely Handmade, a small soap and body care company based here in Guam. I'm also a community organizer and co-executive director of Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. My business, speaking as a small business owner, my business was born from my kitchen table, from a love of creating, something that nurtures both people and the land. But like many small businesses and business owners in Guam, I had to learn that heart and hard work don't always translate into sustainability under our current economic systems. The truth is, running a small business in Guam today is hard. We compete with big brands that can afford to underprice us. Small business owners often work without paid leave, healthcare, or steady income. Every bar of soap that I make carries the weight of high shipping costs, expensive materials, and the challenge of competing with big brands that can underprice and out-advertise me. Sometimes it feels like no matter how much we pour into our businesses, the system just isn't designed for us to truly thrive, just survive. And so because the economic, because of our economic system, we're, are, we're now looking at individual profit over collective well-being. So most of the money we spend and earn ends up leaving our island and it doesn't come back to strengthen our communities, support our workers, or protect our environment. But what gives me hope is the cooperative model. It's an approach that's not new to our people. It's rooted in an Afa Malik and taking care of one another and sharing what we have so that everyone can live with dignity. If we had more cooperatives here, whether it's for local makers, farmers, or service providers, we could share resources, buy supplies in bulk, keep our profits circulating within our own island. Imagine a cooperative marketplace owned by the very people who sell their goods there or a childcare cooperative where parents and caregivers have an equal voice. That's the kind of economy that builds community power, not dependency. The United Nations naming 2025 the International Year of Cooperatives reminds us that this model isn't just idealistic, it's practical and it helps meet the Sustainable Development Goals and gives us real tools to build an economy based on fairness, sustainability, and local control. So as a small business owner, I fully support this resolution. I urge our leaders to invest in cooperative education, funding, and spaces where our local entrepreneurs can grow together. Because our people deserve more than survival, we deserve to thrive side by side in a system that reflects our values. This is Masih for the opportunity to share.
Wow, thank you so much for sharing that story and, you know, I guess the hardships that our businesses go through. And I'm glad to hear that you think the cooperatives are the means to survive as a business as well as retain the values as, you know, environmental values and in general social values. So, you know, I'm really, I guess I'm in awe of your presence, everyone here, because you provide some insight on how to move forward with cooperatives. So I do appreciate all your efforts. First, I want to recognize Tewid and, you know, MCCA for their initial, bringing this to me initially. It was, I think, over a year, maybe two years ago, when you brought this to me, this hundred-plus document. And I was like, okay, I don't, I need to understand this, right? And it took the whole term really to really get to understand and get comfortable with it, in addition to tailoring the, the cooperative law that is now part of Guam law. So many thanks to you, to your groups that are here today and for also seeing the value of cooperatives. You know, people who live in the States kind of know this already, right? They know how cooperatives, how important cooperatives are and they've seen the success stories in the States. And so they know it works, right? We know from those experiences it works and we want to be able to, you know, bring that here to Guam, you know, this very valuable, very powerful model that the UN has, you know, has now recognized this year as the International Year of Cooperatives and seeing the value it has. And so it has many applications. So it's, I know, Michelle, you mentioned food security. And to me, I really truly believe cooperatives is what is going to help bring us food security here on our island. And it's not just the ideals that you come with, but also the experience. You guys have expertise and knowledge that you can bring forward in making cooperatives, you know, establishing cooperatives here on Guam. And so that's something that I would want to continue to work with you as well as be a conduit to government agencies who have this capacity, who can help bring capacity to this important measure. And so we did get responses from government entities. So one of them being GIDA and they stated in their testimony that they don't, so basically I will just go ahead and read a little bit into it. So it's basically, as you know, GIDA is diligently working to diversify Guam's economy into industries with growth potential such as agriculture, aquaculture, fisheries, technology, and certain types of manufacturing, to name a few. And many of these industries have the potential to increase Guam's economic resiliency, resiliency as well as the safety and prosperity of the entire region. In truth, although we have a peripheral understanding cooperative associations fostering growth in cooperatives as an engine to drive new economic development, has not been at the forefront of our initiatives. And moving forward, we will determine how Public Law thirty-seven dash one-four-seven and the goals of this resolution can augment our ongoing initiatives. With regards to the education and outreach campaign mentioned in the resolution, further discussions regarding resources, both professional discussions regarding resources, both professional and financial will have to be started to determine what capacity, if any, we may have to undertake the role in conjunction with the other entities mentioned in the resolution. So this is signed by the CEO, Administrator Christina Garcia. And so I would, you know, I would definitely would like to follow up a conversation with all of you and with GIDA to get this moving, right? We want to see movement in this. And so I guess the question I have, so Michelle and also Maneka, you talked about grants and, you know, your backgrounds as far as technical assistance. I think that's what you guys bring to the table, is this understanding and knowledge of this. And perhaps maybe bringing that to a meeting with them would be great. So maybe I don't have a question for now, for now, but I just, I know that you guys have this expertise. But if there's anything you want to comment regarding that?
Yeah, so GSC has already been working as a resource center for farmers. We have hours of operation just to provide assistance, help get them access to funding, even just to get their UEI numbers so that they can apply for federal grants. And so we have applied for a grant that allows us to be a resource center. And we're looking for other funding so that we can also train our staff to learn more about cooperatives and add that to what we can help with at our resource center for the farmers. So we are looking for additional funding and even partnering with groups out in Hawaii to get the training so that we can also provide resources and support, in addition to what we're already doing with the farmers, which is like helping them get their bona fide farmer's certificate, helping them navigate the revenue and tax processes, and just looking for simple grants and funding. Really, anything that they're having issues with, we open our doors up for appointments. And so we want to continue to be a resource center with additional funding and support, and also be able to offer support for cooperatives in the future. So there's a potential that we could do something like that. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think with, in the case of cooperatives too, once we get, and I don't think any has been incorporated just yet because DRT hasn't, or they just started to roll out the actual forms needed to be filed for the business licenses. What comes to mind for me is the GUMUP program that has been very successful on starting up some really great local entrepreneurs on the islands, and that being a model for how we can also incubate cooperatives. And so there's already local examples of business development, but if we do it with a more cooperative lens and what the potential that could be. And Te Wai is actually, Te Wai and Jordan have been going to different cooperative conferences, and they have probably a lot more insight onto different funds that may be available to support the coordination of more cooperative efforts on the island. But for sure, one thing that Micronesia Climate Change Alliance is very interested in doing is helping with that incubation process, as well as being a model for governance systems, just within our own organization, and wanting to be more membership-driven and led, and learning how to hold hard conversations with people, and how to handle conflict, which comes up especially when money gets involved. We just know that there's going to be, need to have social infrastructure to support hard and tough conversations that are going to need, that will arise when the community is building and growing with, through the challenges of opening a business together. And those are all things that will need to be addressed in the bylaws of any cooperative. And so just that technical assistance of creating bylaws is something else that I think that we can definitely be building our own skills internally to be able to help others and offer that as a service on island.
Yes, thank you for that insight. I know the cooperative model is not for everybody because it involves a lot of those conversations and how to move forward with them, so thank you. And so Maria, also, maybe if I have a question for you. You know, you're saying that this model is, brings you hope. And so how do you envision it ensuring that your business, you know, is sustainable?
We did have, if you're familiar with New Motlu Refillery, that was a great sort of example of a cooperative initiative that even Maneka and I have discussed, MCCA leading some sort of small business cooperative where we partner with local makers. So yeah, I think we just need to have that internal discussion and figure out a framework, but it's definitely something that we're interested in supporting. And yeah, just as a small business owner, just thinking about how much I spend in shipping costs to bring, you know, bulk oils to the island, for example, for my soaps. Imagine, you know, just having a community where we can make a lot of the different ingredients that we need for the products that we need for our small businesses. So, so yeah, I think there's a lot of hope there, I think there is a lot of potential. And I think that this next step in getting DRT to move forward with having cooperatives on the business license applications will, you know, that's momentum, and we need to continue on with that momentum.
Thank you. Te Wai, I know in our discussions you were mentioning that you might have a template for bylaws, articles of incorporation. Is that something that you may be willing to share with those that are interested in developing cooperatives here on Guam?
Half a day, Senator. Yes, we do. We, Pacific Negean Equities, along with Micronesia Climate Change Alliance, have strong partnerships with the U.S. Federation of Worker Cooperative, as well as our, we consider them our sister organization, the Northwest Cooperative Development Center in Washington State. They've been incredibly helpful in getting us all the templates in terms of bylaws and articles of incorporation, articles of organization. In fact, also, the Georgia Employee Ownership Center have also provided us their templates. But we have large resources that we can tap into to get these templates. And we do have some templates, but many cooperatives can form in different ways. That's the flexibility of cooperatives and the democratic nature of cooperatives. They can form however they need to to meet their needs. And so there are many organizations that we have partnership with and close relationship with that we can use their templates. We have partnership with the Sustainable Economy Law Center. We have also many cooperatives in Hawaii that we have close relationships with Purple Mai, and they have their templates formed. And so we can definitely provide those resources. We kind of anticipated that this, there would be this sort of gap, void, in ensuring that there's cooperative education. And so we have been diligently preparing for the sort of scenarios.
Thank you. And I know you mentioned that there is a need for a cooperative development center. And so I know at YOGI, there's a small business development center. It would be, I guess, good to follow up with YOGI in regards to creating a spinoff. So that's something, a discussion that we need to follow up with YOGI. In addition to workforce development, I think Department of Labor. So once the awareness gets out and the information gets out, it's important to follow up with these agencies that can help create, I guess, more foundation or a home for people who want to develop these kind of businesses, cooperatives on Guam. Okay, so I think those are my questions, and I just want to hand it over to my colleague, Senator Calvo. I did ask her to read a testimony, and she, you know, she gladly said she would, she agreed to reading the testimony by the University of Guam. So you're recognized, Senator Calvo. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we have a couple of testimonies here. I'm gonna go ahead and read the one for YOGI. But let me give you guys, un dan kalun sidus Masih, for your testimonies, your input in the matter. And I know this is just the beginning, and there's a lot of talks that we have to do moving forward, but I appreciate, we both appreciate your input and matters, and each one of you delivered an angle for us to see, to consider, and angles that will be very helpful in formulating this resolution. But I'm gonna go ahead and read through YOG's testimony from YOG C. Grant, Dr. Austin J. Half a day. This one is attention to Senator Sabina Perez and the rest of the senators that are, that have co-sponsored the resolution. This is relative to the United Nations Declaration of 2025 as an International Year of Cooperatives, and recognizing its importance in achieving Sustainable Development Goals and revitalizing economic, social development of Guam and the Oceanic Region. Half a day, the University of Guam Center for Island Sustainability and Sea Grant, YOG CIS NSG supports Resolution Number 83-38 in recognition of the importance of cooperative enterprises in relation to achieving the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. In the spirit of cooperatives, the Guam Green Growth, G3 Initiative serves as our island's largest private-public partnership ever created to achieve a sustainable future. The initiative illustrates the significance of collaborative agreements, organized effort towards common goals, working group members' participation, and the collection of sharing of information for the good of our community. These are already three action items that we can be mindful in putting together these, in following this resolution and putting together these cooperative initiatives. So through the G3 Initiative and its action framework, members are committed to achieving the UN SDGs within Guahan through identified goals, metrics, and analyzed development to continue or adjust action. Working group members participating in G3 focus on progress toward a healthy and prosperous community. Through investing in local infrastructure, we recognize the capabilities and strengths residents hold to achieve prosperity. Working group members support innovation and empowerment through supporting sustainable employment opportunities. In the face of food insecurity, we recognize the importance of being self-sufficient and support subsistence farming by offering residents skills to cultivate fresh produce and maintain aquaponics system. As a proponent, workforce development, YOG CIS NSG will support from Ilhiss to Turen, Guahan, facilitate various workforce development programs such as G3 Conservation Corps, providing skills training in the circular economy, clean energy solutions, agriculture, aquaponics, watershed restoration, and island beautification. These investments in continual skills development and civic engagement proves beneficial for all sectors of our society, including natural resource protection, human society, and economic development. YOG CIS NSG supports worker cooperatives and the partnerships that will come from the development of related goals-focused sustainable business models. Responsible development, economic growth, and the prosperity of our island community rely on continual partnerships between organizations working toward the reality of a sustainable future. We remain dedicated to supporting legislation and initiatives that promote cooperative enterprises and sustainable progress for the people of Guam. Sinceramente, Dr. Austin Shelton, C. Grant, YOG.
Cito Masih, Senator Calvo. The floor is still yours if you have any further questions or comments.
Yes, honestly, I don't really have a lot of questions. I'm very familiar with cooperative initiatives. In the past, I actually pulled together a lot of mothers, women, who could not leave their homes because they have children that they care for, and they couldn't afford to have a sitter, or they could not afford to leave the house because they don't have vehicles. So what I did is pulled together a lot of them. The business model was, you know, that round, what do you call that, the rags? The round rags that is used for cleaning, usually for industrial use. Now, I used to, I have this business model, which is based on cooperative, and the whole goal of that was for me to help mothers, young mothers most especially, so, you know, they can make a living even if they're just homebound. So at one point, I would deliver 10,000 kilos, that's a lot, that's a full truckload of the circular rags. And that went on for a while, so I was the middle person, so I just brokered so they can have their own little businesses in their homes. So I fully support this resolution, and as a matter of fact, I'm one of the sponsors, and I am so happy and I commend the author. I'm so happy that she invited me to co-sponsor because I know exactly on a personal note how this whole thing can actually transform lives and uplift individuals and help the community, in the most simplest way possible. We don't really see that often, but this is such an incredible initiative, and I'm so, so thankful for people like you guys who have the interest to push this initiative. Anyways, that was a successful endeavor. The orders came, you know, larger and larger. And when it became fully sustainable, fully developed, and it was already stable, I left the business to the mothers, to the women. Actually, it was an initiative that I did for women back in the day, many, many moons ago, don't ask how old I am. But the only thing I'm interested to actually hear more is from Mr. Tuwai, because you mentioned earlier, when we were speaking about GIDA, Guam Economic Development, you mentioned something about businesses, supporting businesses or large entities that will sell back to their employees and/or tenants. So I wanted to hear more about that because these are things that us policymakers can actually be useful for us in looking into other ways to sustain or to help you guys. So can you please expound further on this idea that you have or suggestion that you have? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Thank you for sharing that story about the mothers running that business. Yeah, I definitely want to expound on it because California, Washington State, and Colorado State see this crisis that's happening, and it's called the Silver Tsunami Crisis. So, yep, so there's a Silver Tsunami Crisis, and studies have shown it in Project Equities Studies, along with U.S. Federation of Worker Cooperative Studies. And the Silver Tsunami Crisis shows that in the next few years, millions of business owners, generation, the boomer generation, are in preparation for selling their business. And they have no viable, immediate viable exit strategy that is going to allow their communities to ensure that they have those positions or their jobs protected. And so when a baby boomer, Silver Tsunami and that silver hair, the baby generations are getting prepared to sell their businesses, they don't have a viable business exit strategy. So the only options that they have is they sell it to a large business that So the only options that they have is they sell it to a large business that is not guaranteed that they're going to protect those employees that have vested interest in maintaining the business and maintaining their communities, and they have intimate knowledge of how the business operates. Those large businesses cannot guarantee that those jobs will be there. In fact, when you look at the news, you see large corporations buy businesses, and then they immediately sell it, or they downsize it, or they completely turn it into something different from the original nature of the original business intention, business owner's intention. So it's a viable exit strategy, and some parts of the Small Business Administration are using that in their workshops. In Connecticut, the SBA is using that as an exit strategy for business owners. And so when business owners are ready to go into retirement mode, and they want to feel good about ensuring that their workers that they've employed for decades can maintain their jobs, they sell it to the workers. So the workers come together, they form the LCA, or they form a cooperative, and then they buy out from the business owners. And they either can get a loan from a lender that specializes in cooperatives, or they can work with the business owner to provide a business owner financing, seller financing. And so that ensures the employees have job protection, they, and also they can continue to build their equity. Because when you form a cooperative, cooperatives allow you to build internal accounts. And so in addition to building your, either your TSP or your 401K, the business, when it makes excess amount of profits, it goes into an internal account, especially for that employee. So you're building wealth. And in terms of the landlord, it's the same thing. Landlords often sell because either they want to get away from owning an apartment or there's expenses that are associated. And they don't want to necessarily sell it to a foreign company, but they want to ensure that they, they're relinquishing that asset so they can move on to different business ventures or just into retirement mode. And so they can, they have an option, a viable option, to sell it to their tenants. The tenants come together, they form the LCA or cooperative, housing cooperative, and they can, using different investment strategies, can buy it from the landlord. Thank you for that question.
Thank you for explaining that and expounding on the idea. It's actually very helpful and beneficial because the truth of the matter is people build businesses and empires, and some of them, some, some people don't have children to pass it on, some people, they age and they want to just move somewhere else. So giving the first right to the employees, especially the ones that have spent years and years and years of service, would have been, would be a good model, which actually, yes, Senator Perez, GIDEA can probably do something, you know, like we can talk to GIDEA about that. Thank you so much. And I truly appreciate you guys. I just want to say thank you again to Sutus Massey and Madam Chair, Sutus Massey, to your, the time and the opportunity to speak.
Sutus Massey, Senator Calvo. I didn't realize the knowledge that you have, and so I'm very grateful for your sharing that story to us and look forward to collaborating further. We did also receive testimony from Generalin Abanalas, who's from the district, she's the district manager of the Northern Guam Solid Water Conservation District. She urges the legislature to support Resolution 83-38 as well. If I can just provide a little excerpt from her. She goes, "Guam's strength has always been rooted in an Aifat Malak, the spirit of restoring harmony and working together for the good of all. Similarly, in the Filipino philosophy of kapwa, we understand that the self is not separate from others, that our identity and well-being are interconnected with the people around us. And these shared cultural values remind us that collective progress and mutual care are essential for a thriving community. So however, Western business models often emphasize individualism and hierarchy, which do not always align with our island's community-centered way of life. Too often, major decisions are made for us, not with us, leading to segregation and a lack of shared understanding. Cooperatives honor both Aifat Malak and kapwa by empowering people to share ownership, responsibility, and benefit, creating systems that reflect who we are as islanders and as Pacific peoples." And so she goes on to say that it could be also beneficial to an emerging cannabis sector by integrating social, medical, environmental, economic, and spiritual dimensions. Cooperatives can unite growers, healers, patients, and advocates under shared values of transparency, equity, and sustainability. And this approach supports Guam's vision for industries rooted in community well-being and conscious growth." And so just a couple of excerpts from her testimony. So in closing, I would like to thank all of you that have persisted for many years and in being here as an inspiration for our community, because it's going to take inspiration as well as hard work to get this through, the persistence that you guys have. And I just want to share with you that my colleagues, Senator Calvo, and all my co-sponsors are here to continue this effort. What I really believe is that this resolution is really an action, is a call to action for our community, for those who want to step up as champions, like you said, Maneka, to champion solutions for our growing list of issues facing our island today. And so I want to thank you for advocating for this particular business model, whose success has been proven worldwide, to lift communities out of poverty. I always like to mention the Mondragon Cooperatives, which is one of the most successful cooperatives from Spain, who started very humbly as a workers cooperative for kerosene heaters and has grown to a conglomerate of diverse cooperatives that produce bicycles, elevators, jet engines, rockets, turbines, RD centers, grocery chains, schools, that has transformed a once impoverished region. And so I think that, you know, in some ways, our island, I see some, some sort of lesson from them, that we can learn from them, as well as from many other places like Sri Lanka, as well as the Philippines, as well as other areas that were able to lift themselves out of poverty or provide a means of survival and continue to support for their families as well as protecting their environment. So if there are no further testimonies or questions, Resolution 83-38 has been duly heard. The time is now 3:21 PM. Sutus Massey.